Have a look to see who's got the nicest house.
Hmm? Jeff has a nice ceiling. I like that ceiling.
Looks like he's upside down.
Steve's keeping it subtle.
David looks a little bland. He should at least change his shirt. You're like melting in your background. Can you hear us? I think you can hear me.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Doylestown Township's first remote Board of Supervisors meeting, and we are allowed to do this tonight. Thank you to Senate Bill 841, which Governor Wolf signed into law yesterday, which outlines the requirements for local municipalities to conduct remote meetings. Namely, there are lots of requirements, but before tonight's meeting, anticipating the governor would sign this into law, last week we created postings and notices to our residents through our website and our other platforms, as well as did an ad for our local newspaper indicating that this would be a remote meeting and how residents can call in ahead of time, post questions ahead of time, call in now as the meeting is going on. There is a telephone number appearing on your screen. Let me state it. Two six seven eight seven zero seven zero eight two. And Andrea Suston is our project's manager and coordinator. She is standing by to accept any telephone calls that might come along during this meeting. This telecast is being livestreamed, and it will also be broadcast on Comcast 22, Verizon 31. And you can see it on our website at doylstownpa.org, and it will be repeated twice a day, every day for the next couple of weeks, on Comcast and Verizon. And you can obtain it, as I said, anytime on doylstownpa.org. Did I cover everything pretty much? Okay, so hello Jen, who is not present at the meeting but is remote. Hello Jeffrey Garten, who is not present.
Hello.
Aye, and Dave Tomco, Director of Ops, who is remote as well. So all of us are actually present under the law. We can all vote as if we were all in the room. That would be Jen Herring and all of us. And how you doing? Okay? You look really good.
Thanks.
So let's get on with the agenda then. Visitor or public comment? Do we have any visitor or public comment that either was sent to us previously or coming in now?
We did not receive anything ahead of time. Andrea, is anyone calling in?
And there's no one in the audience except for Sergeant Chuck Ziegler and Director of Finance Ken Wallace. So there aren't any other peeps out there. But hello, everybody out there. If you're watching, we miss you, so hopefully you all come back soon. All right, next meeting of this board is Tuesday, May 19th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. We're going to reopen to the public, we hope, starting May 1st, 8:30 to 4:30 during regular business hours. We're going to continue to practice good hygiene, sanitary conditions, and safe distance between individuals. Unless the governor issues a further stay-home order, we are going to be open on May 1st.
May 8.
Barbara, he did issue.
I'm sorry.
Just, that was yesterday.
Okay.
This was put out Friday.
So starting May 8th, we are going to be open, all right? Not May 1st. That being said, we have been open all along. We have had full staffing, even though they've been staggered staffing throughout the week. Everyone had, anyone who needed access to Doylestown Township has had access through the telephone or website. We've been answering calls. We've been providing services. The police department has been providing services. So even though we haven't been here full-time, we have been present full-time in the facility. There has been no disruption of services. So kudos to Stephanie and her team, and Dean Logan, Chief of Police, and his staff. So thank you. Guys have been done really good, really, really good. Thank you. And then, we're going to cancel our golf outing. It's actually postponed to August 24th, 2020, Doylestown Country Club. So stay tuned for further details. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the May 17th regular meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to review them? Yes? Is that a yes, Jen?
It is a yes.
Yeah, Jen says yes here. Is there a motion or any corrections or changes?
No changes. I make a motion to approve the minutes from March 17th.
There's a motion to approve the minutes from Nancy Santa Cecilia. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jen says aye. Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, correspondences from the solicitor. Anything from you, Mr. Garten?
I'd love to report at the moment, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Township engineer is not here at this meeting, and he was excused because he had no business. Chief?
Just to let the board know and the township residents know that Lieutenant O'Connor retired today. We had a nice little brief send-off for him this afternoon. We wish him well, and he'll be back in at some point as the government opens up fully to be recognized by the board at some point. Additionally, I want to thank the residents of Doylestown Township for complying with the governor's orders for the stay-at-home. Our calls for service have drastically reduced. Thank you for everyone for staying in. We are starting to see a little bit of increased activity out there. We've been trying to ask the people just comply. We haven't had to cite anybody. We've had a couple of warnings here and there, but for the most part, the businesses and the residents have been complying with the stay-at-home orders and the essential businesses. So as things start to open up, we hope that everybody complies, and you know, as things are going, it looks like the orders are going out till at least May 8th. So we hope that everybody can continue to stay home, give us a little bit of time to catch up. But we have been, you know, we're out there in full force. We're out there being visible as much as we can.
Thank you, Chief. And one of the questions I had for the chief this week, as national concern is rising for victims of domestic violence, and I asked the chief if that was a concern in our community, and he said no, there has been no rise or increase in domestic violence in this area.
That is one call that has not increased, but it hasn't drastically decreased either. So we're having, it's nice to see that people, even though they're being cooped up, we're maintaining our self-control.
All right, thank you. Dave Tomco, Director of Ops?
Nothing to report.
Township manager, you have a few things, Stephanie?
I do have a few things tonight. In your packet is the Eastern Road PFC sod and the decision by the DEP to provide in-house filtration systems and continue to provide bottled water to the homes that are impacted by the PFO PFOS contamination in that area with eight properties. They had a meeting, which we attended in November of last year, when DEP took public comment, and their decision is in all of the information. Residents who are impacted and had questions received responses to their questions from DEP and the methodology that they went through to make their determination. And all that is there for you. If you have any questions, please let me know. The second thing I have is, we were supposed to have a budget work session beginning of April, which we postponed. I would like to schedule a budget work session for May 19th at 5:00 PM. We provided the board with some detailed information regarding what we believe may be the impacts of all of the coronavirus on our budgets going forward, and we would like the opportunity to review that information in more detail in a budget work session in May. We're going to take the pause and watch everything, revenues and expenditures going forward over the next few months. But we would like to give you the results of 2019 at that meeting. I know the Ways and Means, and also the Pension Advisory Committee would also like to speak with you regarding budget concerns going forward for 2021 as well. And we'll be into that process pretty quickly.
I think we would like to hear that as well. So May 19th at 5:00 PM. Everyone go with that date and time?
Agreed.
Okay?
Good.
Thank you.
So we'll advertise that. Well, we're advertising it right now as we speak this, so.
But we'll follow. It is, so.
So just before.
I'll make sure we have snacks to keep everybody going from 5 to 7.
Bring your own snack. All right.
The last item, you will recall it, the reorganization meeting. You acknowledged and set the official township holidays. But with the coronavirus, as you know, the primary election day, which is a holiday, because this room is used as a polling place, has been moved from April 28th to June 2nd, which happens to be one of your meeting nights as well. And so this is actually polling places for one and eight. So I would like to request the board to acknowledge that the primary election day as the holiday will move from the 28th of April to June 2nd.
But we're going to still have our meeting.
You won't be able to have your meeting.
Why not?
Because this room, the polls are open till like 8 o'clock at night.
So we have to move our meeting as well.
Or just have one meeting in June. You can either select another date.
I'd rather have a meeting.
That's fine.
Here.
Here?
On June 2nd. Can't do it.
I don't think we can.
Can we do it in Kid's Castle?
We could pick the pavilion and do it out at the pavilion. We won't be able to.
In the red building.
Oh, not the red building.
All right, so we're canceling the June 2nd meeting. We're moving that to the, we're acknowledging that's the primary election day. You guys are going to be working on June, on April 28th. And they'll be off on June 2nd. Does everyone understand that?
Yep.
Any questions, objections?
Just one related to that, Stephanie. Have we heard anything from the Board of Elections about having one and eight in the same room during the coronavirus stuff? Have they discussed possibly breaking us up here?
They have not reached out to us regarding that at all. I know when they came through and looked at the facility, they felt that they could accommodate one and eight in here very easily. So.
Was that before coronavirus or after?
That was before coronavirus. That was the, right before the November election, which, you know, I know was a smaller election. So I don't know what it will bring. We've been putting on a lot of information through social media on other ways to provide your ballot, such as mail-in and things like that. So we've tried to push that out there and encourage that as best we can. But the county Board of Elections has not contacted us at all about how they want things set up or anything like that for use of the room.
And Jen, have you heard about the May 19th 5:00 PM budget meeting? And then we're going to be off on June 2nd, and they're going to be off on June 2nd and working April 28th. You got that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Any problems, any questions? You have any problems or questions about any of that? Nope? Okay. Are there any questions coming in from outside, Andrea, that you can tell? Okay. Any comments? All right, we'll move on to supervisors' comments. Anything, Nancy? Ryan?
Yeah, just a quick thank you to, number one, our township employees who have been here and continuing our essential services to the public. So I want to thank them for everything they've done. Thank you to our police department for everything that they continue to do. And then general acknowledgement to our healthcare workers at Doylestown Hospital and, you know, everybody who is out there, our essential workers, our, you know, our grocery store workers and gas attendants and everybody who's out there that, you know, I appreciate that. And on the flip side, I concur with the chief that I think that the township has done a fantastic job of complying with the stay-at-home. And I think, you know, it speaks to, I just saw today, before I came to the meeting, Dr. Burks was on, giving the national briefing, and she actually cited Pennsylvania as one of the states where they are seeing the numbers come down. So all pointing to great signs.
Okay, thank you. Jen, you have anything?
I do. I just wanted to let everybody know we had the Pension Advisory Committee meeting on April 13th. It was a remote meeting. I think it was the only committee meeting that was done so far, and it went really well. So I'm excited about the technology aspect of it. There, we reviewed the township's investment policy, basically the guidelines that the township wants to give our advisors on how we want to invest our money for the pension, as well as some general conversations. I also wanted to thank Stephanie and Ken Wallace for putting together that financial information that we'll be talking about in the future. It was really comprehensive and very helpful. I also wanted to acknowledge all the compassionate acts that we've been seeing in the township. We've seen the hospital, the medical community working. The YMCA is offering meals and showers for people who are without a home right now. There are some amazing groups that are out there now. One of them is the Mask Makers of Doylestown. They delivered 7,000 masks to help care workers in the region and slightly outside the region. Just a bunch of volunteers putting together what they can to sew face masks for healthcare workers. There's another group called Doylestown Neighbors United, who have been doing incredible work, helping the people in the community. But like the chief and supervisor Mannion said, the most amazing thing, the most compassionate act that we've seen so far is all the people staying at home and giving the relief to those medical workers that would otherwise be overwhelmed. So I'd like to congratulate all of the residents for doing what they can to help out the medical community.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Dan?
Yeah, just a few pieces. One, I just want to remind our residents that the Environmental Advisory Council is still looking for a new member to join. So if you're interested, please contact the township. And for the sewer project happening in Pebble Ridge, Woodridge, work was stopped briefly during the coronavirus outbreak, but has picked up. The workers are continuing to follow social distancing guidelines as best they can while they continue working on the sewer project. And I also just wanted to acknowledge how many people I've noticed lately are taking advantage of our trail system here in Doylestown. I live right on it, so I'm seeing a lot more people out there, which is great. Gives people a way to get out instead of going stir-crazy. One thing just to ask is to make sure everyone is continuing to follow social distancing guidelines on the trail and just common trail etiquette. Bicyclists, make sure you call out joggers or walkers. Let them know you're approaching. And if you're walking your dog, please, even if they're on a leash, make sure you're holding the leash properly, because you never know how another dog might react as well-behaved as your dog might be. That's all I have.
Thanks, Dan. Good job. Thank you.
You had something, Barb?
Sure, absolutely.
I just wanted to, A, say thank you to everyone for the, all the healthcare workers, as Ryan said. I also wanted to remind people, the school district's working really hard to offer anyone in need with food needs. Barclay Elementary School, every Wednesday at 4 o'clock, has an open farmer's market. There's no questions asked, just as long as you're a Central Bucks family, you can come through. They've had an overwhelming response. And I think the Doylestown United's been a big part of that as well, so thank you. But just want to remind people that that is an option for people. And I also wanted to recognize our Boy Scout, the Eagle Scout proclamation from Michael Boehner. He actually was supposed to have a ceremony in April, which I was planning to go to. I just wanted to say congratulations and hope to be able to celebrate that in the future with him.
That's nice. Thank you. Well, Jen, the Doylestown Township and Municipal Authority has met twice, both through remote, on March 16th and April 16th. And it's very important because they're charged with keeping our water moving and keeping it clean, and they're planning construction. And those guys are full steam ahead. So kudos to Mr. Haas and his team. They're really working hard, and their meetings have been very productive. And in addition to all the wonderful things that are happening out there, we had a blood drive on Friday, the 17th of April, and it was very well-attended. I think Caitlin Finley reported that there were almost 34, well, there were 33, 34 blood donations, pints accumulated. And I forget how many people that will, that life-serving, every pint, you know, helps so many people. So thank you, Caitlin, for organizing that, and it was extremely successful. So right here in Doylestown Township, in our little home here, we're doing and saving lives as well. So thank you, Caitlin, if you're back there listening to me. Got a thumbs up. The other thing that I wanted to just bring up right now, our parks and rec, our parks and programs are, we have a stay on them, a closure on them until April 30th. And we're not meeting again now until May 19th. The governor's order extends until May 8th. I think we should, you know, extend that park closure order for a bit beyond May 8th, because we have different concerns than maybe with the rest of Commonwealth. And anyway, well, the governor's order doesn't open parks to begin with. But I think if we don't extend that April 30th deadline, it'll terminate. And the likelihood is, people will just come back to the parks. So we need to put some, an addition, extension in place. You guys okay with that? What are you thinking? Jeffrey, what do you think?
Well, you can make a date certain, or you can say extend it till as long as the governor imposes his order. So you can tailor it to that.
Okay, an extension to be consistent with the governor's order.
Yeah, that would mean you don't have to worry about redoing it, unless you choose to make it longer than his order.
Well, his order is limited to certain industry as of May 8th. So that doesn't affect our parks anyway, right? Or park programs. So.
I mean, does East Valley open though on Monday?
It's county stuff.
Yeah, it's county.
And they've opened up to the, they haven't opened up the amenities, but they have opened up their trails in the county, just as our trails. You can come to the parking lot, walk on the trails. And the county can do the same thing now, before they were closed. I think some of the signage we've put out, originally we had April 30th, and we moved it to further, some just further notice, because we knew it was sort of a, you know, moving target. Now it's May 8th. What happens if it becomes something later?
It's not May 8th.
Well, that's when.
Well, the other, the other thing is, Kid's Castle is something you need to think seriously about because of the volume of kids and how close they are with each other in that structure. So maybe something you may want to make your decision based on what's the best thing for Kid's Castle.
I think we just extended another 30 days till the end of May.
That's fine.
You know, and we can empty it, open it beforehand if we want to.
Okay.
Yeah, so your dog park people might want theirs dog park. All dogs, all parks. I know the dog park people would want it open. Everybody wants to be able to do that, but.
Right.
April, May 30th?
Just push it to May 30th and see what happens. If there's any other extensions from the governor or anything, we're prepared.
Right, and we can always, we can always pull back if we need to pull back.
Since the governor's extensions are about workplace, not necessarily parks. You know?
Yep.
Okay, so I guess the consensus is we extend to May 30th. Is that, is that the end of the month, or is it May 31st?
Uh, May 31st.
That's to May 31st, being the end of the month. Okay, thank you for that. All right, and now the next item on the agenda is the, were there any questions out there, Angela? Eagle Scout proclamation for Michael Boehner, Troop 71. Would you like to make the motion to accept the proclamation or move the proclamation?
Yes, I would love to make the motion to, for the proclamation for our Eagle Scout, Michael Boehner, and Scout Troop 71.
Excellent. Second?
I'd be happy to second it. It's my old troop.
Aww.
Oh, that's awesome. All right, there's a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations to Michael, and hopefully they'll let us know when his Eagle Scout Court of Honor will occur. And then you can go and read the proclamation. How's that? All right, good. Next item on the agenda, Pebble Ridge, Woodridge Sewer Projects, payment numbers 10 and 11. Do you want to speak to that? Who's speaking to that?
Either Dan or I can, but the committee did, I guess when we met in March, they did agree to 10, and then 11, by consensus, they also agreed that those payments should be made.
I'll make a motion to make both of those payments.
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now we have the consideration of the resolution that extends the face payment date of our local real estate taxes to July 31st, 2020. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Can I just get some, I was reading through the email, just clarification on the, the, I don't know what you call it, but the, I guess it's the discount, it shows up as a discount. So the discounted rate right now is, April 30th is the deadline.
That remains.
That remains. So the discounted rate has not been.
No.
Okay.
Just the face period, what they call the face period.
Okay.
Has been extended a month, so it takes it till the end of July.
Okay.
Got it?
Yep.
Yeah. I think they couldn't extend, I wanted them to extend the discount period, but that's guided by statute, and it couldn't be done. All right, and I guess they weren't inclined to do legislation to have that occur. So, all right, is there, I forget, is there a motion?
There's a motion. We just need a second.
Who approved? Who moved it?
Ms. Herring.
Okay.
So we need a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we want to reaffirm the declaration of disaster emergency. It's provided there in front of you. We have to continue it. We have to reiterate it. So is there a motion to re-declare the declaration of disaster emergency?
Sure, I'll make the notion to reissue the declaration of disaster.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, good. Treasurers' Report from April 21st, 2020. Everyone had a chance to review it electronically? Is there a motion to approve it?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's Jen's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the Treasurers' Report from April 21st, 2020. Got Dan?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Did I say the Bills list, or did I say the Treasurers' Report? I meant the Bills list, not the Treasurers' Report. Okay, so is that okay? You were proving that you moved the Bills.
I'll stick with the Bills list, yeah.
And then you second, you second, all right. Thank you. Okay, announcements. I'm going to reiterate the announcements. Our next meeting of the Board of Supervisors is Tuesday, May 19th at 7:00. The budget work session is going to occur on the same date at 5:00 PM. We're going to be closed May 1st, no, we're going to be open to the public May 8th. However, our business is continuing until then, so don't hesitate to contact the township, telephone or through the website. And the Township Golf Outing is continued until April 24th at Doylestown Country Club. August 24th, thank you, 2020, at Doylestown Country Club. And primary election day is now June 2nd. Township building will be open. We will be working on April 28th, the former primary election day date. And the township will be closed for primary election day on June 2nd.
Barb, can I ask one question just regarding the budget meeting on the 19th? Just for clarification for us in the Ways and Means Committee, if the stay-at-home order is extended past May 9th and it extends past May 19th, will we still hold that meeting? I mean, I would suggest, because that, it's a large group, that we.
We'll zoom.
Okay.
Yeah, we will have that meeting.
Okay, just want to.
Good question. No, we're going to have that meeting face-to-face or otherwise.
Okay.
And I would assume some people, perhaps with more severe health issues, who perhaps don't feel comfortable coming out by that point in time, perhaps we can have them participate via Zoom while those who feel comfortable coming into the room to do a meeting, we could allow that. We could set it up.
Well, it depends. I mean, who can participate via Zoom at a township meeting?
Well, I'm thinking of members.
Members of the committee.
Members of the various committees.
I wasn't sure if that's who you were talking about, or about anybody beyond that.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about staff or.
Of course, any member of the board, you know, of the Ways and Means Committee who doesn't want to come here in person can participate via Zoom, absolutely.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
And I think.
Or anybody here who doesn't want to come on May 19th.
And I think too, just, just to that effect, you know, as we look at the rollout of this, and we look at the potential of, let's say everything does open up May 9th, and then we go back into, okay, committee meetings are being held. I think, you know, for the foreseeable future, that, that we should provide the option for Zoom meetings for volunteers. So if they want to, do you see what I'm saying? Like, there's going to be a comfort level for a little bit, I think, and we want to make sure that we're providing them accessibility to participate in the meetings.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we've always allowed members from our volunteers that perhaps were ill and couldn't come to the meeting to participate by phone. I think the Zoom is just another option. It's visual versus just an audio option for them to participate if they can't make it for some reason.
Of course, absolutely. So this was a good test run. I appreciate everyone participating, Jen participating, Jeff, Dave.
Jeff, we need your whole face next time, though. We only have from the nose up.
I don't have any shirt on, no, I'm only kidding.
And thank you Ed Ebenbach for setting this up, and Caitlin Finley for assisting back there. We couldn't have done it without you.
Yeah, thank you, Ed.
All right, any other business? All right, so we, we did this, and we'll be able to do it again. So thank you, everybody, and good night, and be safe, and be well, and stay sane.
Do we have documents to be signed?
Documents to be signed. We are adjourned.
Would it be a Tuesday without documents?
Well, that went really well, I think. Thank you, guys.